To order for Monday, December 3, 2018, and as required by open meeting law, you are hereby informed that the town will be video and audio taping, as well as live broadcasting this public meeting. In addition, anyone in the audience who plans to video or audiotape this meeting must notify the chairman prior to the start of the meeting. Hearing nobody, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to ask everyone to have a moment of silence for the poor young boy who was lost tragically this weekend here in Harwich. And just ask everybody to take a moment to say some prayers for the family. Thank you. Also want to acknowledge the passing of our 41st president, George Herbert Walker Bush. What a tremendous contribution he's made to our country, and we should all be grateful for that, especially the climate that we face today. So, earlier tonight, we were in executive session in regard to the hot stove restaurant contract extension at Cranberry Valley Golf Course, and we voted to approve that contract. So, now I will move on to weekly briefing. Is there anyone for weekly briefing?
Hi, good evening. I'm Ginny Hewitt from Brooks Library. I wanted to just announce a couple of events that are coming up. This Saturday, December 8, we have Children's Storyteller, Big Ryan. He's extremely popular, and that program starts at 2:30. Free tickets, I've given out, starting at 2 o'clock. Also, I wanted to announce that Brooks Library will be open from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. on Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve. So, for vacation week, between Christmas and New Year's, in addition to our usual daytime preschool, storytime, Mother Goose on the loose, and those kind of programs, we've added some special programs. There's an intergenerational movie on Thursday, the 27th, at 1:00. We're going to show the movie Elf. On Friday, December 28, we're going to make Fake Snow in a Craft Program at 2:30. On Saturday, December 29, we have Rainforest Reptiles at 2:30. That's also really popular, and we'll be giving out free tickets for that, starting at 2:00. On Monday, December 31, so again, we're open 10 to 2, a shortened day that day, we're having our first noon Year's Eve party. This is for preschoolers and elementary age kids that are too young to stay up until midnight. So, we'll make noisemakers and play games and ring in the new year, starting at noon. No alcohol will be served.
I like that. I'm too old to stay up until midnight.
You might have some adults, Ginny. Thank you.
Good evening. Hi, Erica Strasbeck from the Harwich Cultural Center, Carolyn Carey. I just wanted to update you. We had our December open house this weekend from 1 to 4, which was a tremendous success. We had events happening throughout the building. The foot sale program kicked off in the activity wing with the Harwich Police Department. We had artists open throughout the building. We had a good partnership with Element, the middle school. They came and they sold popcorn. They're raising money for their all-school trip to see Phantom of the Opera. I'd like to thank the Harwich Junior Theater for donating tickets for people who came and signed up for that raffle. Sound Dune Swing Ensemble was there and provided some entertainment up in the library. So, it was enjoyed by all, and it was nice to do for a second year in a row here.
That's great. Thank you. Hi, Carolyn.
Hi, again. I was honestly just up here to say thank you to Erica and Brian, who put in tremendous amount of hours to make it a success over there. And we really wanted to thank everyone who came out. It was amazing to us how many people come through the building, so, thanks.
That's great. Thank you. Anybody else for weekly briefing? Anybody, oh, sorry, Jack. Public comment and announcements, you do, okay.
Good evening. I'm here in my role as President of the Friends, the Harwich Council on Aging. And I'm pleased to announce that we have a new Friends minibus ride request phone line. And it'll be repeated a lot in the next few weeks, so people use it and don't use old phone lines, old numbers. The new line is 508-432-5050. And I want to thank Carolyn Carey for helping us get this set up and working properly. As always, very helpful. I would admonish those who are tempted, please do not use any other phone number, even if you've used it in the past. We don't want that. We can't handle that. Voicemail is on the 432-5050 line. I'll mention that again later in my lengthy speech. For bus schedule questions or to request a ride, only for those two purposes, call us and leave a voicemail message at 508-432-5050. Thank you very much. We will get back to you for those two types of things. Nothing else.
Great.
Thank you very much, Jack. Yes, that was very clear. Thank you.
Cindy?
Good evening. Cindy Williams, Executive Director of the Harwich Chamber. I want to actually thank Erica and Carolyn and Brian for helping us. We also had an event at the Cultural Center, once again, the second year, with the Trolley to Christmas Town, so, thank you very much. I can't be in two places at once, so it's great to have a partnership like I have with the three of you, so thank you very, very much. Also want to thank everyone that came out for Christmas in Harwich. I did recognize all of you. I don't know if you were all out in the crowd, but thank you for coming, if you were. Also, this week, we jump into our Cultural Council Law District Stakeholders Meeting. We actually have the representatives from the Cultural Council, from the state, coming. There are two meetings, so anyone who has not received an email from us, please, if you feel you would like to be a part of this, which is a wonderful partnership and collaboration, we're encouraging people to come. It is Thursday, December 6. The first one is 10 to 11:30 here in the library. That is for Harwich Center. And the second one will be 1:30 to 3:00 at the Harwich Chamber. And finally, Peg Rose has asked me to make an early announcement to remind residents that Brooks Academy will be celebrating its 175th anniversary, and they're starting to collect items, memorabilia, for the exhibit for next year, so if anyone has anything they would like to bring. If the academy is not open, certainly I can house it until the academy is open. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anybody else for public comments and announcements? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Amy Davies. I'm a Harwich resident and the Executive Director of Provincetown Community Television. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about a serious threat to PEG funding throughout the nation. And I'd like to read a statement into the record, please. "The FCC is considering making changes to the way community media, also known as public educational and government television, PEG access, is funded. As you know, PEG media is now funded through franchise fees paid by cable subscribers and used exclusively for community television. Stations like Harwich's Channel 18 provide gavel-to-gavel coverage to town meetings, board meetings, and other municipal programming. The Harwich Educational Channel 22 and Cape Cod Community Media Centers Channel 99 would also be part of this devastating change to funding. Community media stations allow residents of Harwich to watch and create uniquely local programming about their community and local events and issues of interest to them. Such was the intent of the PEG provisions of the 1984 Cable Act to enhance local voices, serve local community needs and interests, and strengthen our local democracy. By defining franchise fees in an overly broad fashion to include in-kind support, the FCC's proposals will shift the fair balance between cable franchising authorities and cable operators, and will force communities to choose between franchise fees and PEG channels, something that was never the intent of the Act. Currently, PEG stations are available on the lowest tier of the cable television service, making them accessible to all citizens of all income levels." Pardon me. "Allowing the cable companies to change the undefined in-kind services will take away the ability for people who cannot afford to use high-speed internet or cannot use high-speed internet to watch government meetings and stay connected to their communities. Municipalities and individuals can add their comments of opposition to the change on the FCC website. The deadline is fast approaching. It's December 14. And I've attached a sample letter from the PEG advocacy group, Mass Access. That's a draft, if you would consider sending your comments in to the FCC. And I've also attached my business card, if you have any questions."
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
We could have a copy of the letter, so that we will prepare it for the board's signature for the next meeting.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks.
Is there anybody else for public comments and announcements? Ed?
Yeah, oops. Why don't you go ahead?
Go ahead.
Good evening. My name is Mark Saferstone. My wife Sharon and I moved from Virginia to Harwich in December of 2016, and we live year-round at 13 Wisdom Way. And I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to speak to the board regarding a recent Harwich Police Department Citizens Police Academy. I'm taking the liberty of speaking on behalf of myself and 29 other participants who attended the Fall 2018 22nd Harvard Police Department, Harwich Police Department Citizens Police Academy. And a number of those participants are here with me this evening. Most importantly, we want to publicly compliment and sincerely thank Chief Goulamet, Lieutenant Considine, and Patrol Investigator Patel. The chief's leadership and the lieutenant's and the patrol investigator's knowledge and commitment resulted in conducting an exemplary community service program for town of Harwich citizens. If we were given grades, they earned an A+. To provide context for my comments, there were 30 participants from four different generations in the class, and we were demographically representative of the town. We attended 10 weekly three-hour sessions, starting in mid-September and ending in mid-November, that were planned and facilitated by Lieutenant Considine with Patrol Investigator Patel's assistance. These highly interactive sessions highlighted all aspects of the police department's mission, responsibilities, operations, and challenges. The 10 sessions involved more than 20 instructors and included a 90-minute building tour, as well as three-hour ride-alongs and a range day for those who wanted to participate. There were also classroom demonstrations that included real-time field sobriety tests, the SWAT team, and watching canine officers work with their handlers. Each session also provided for vibrant question-and-answer opportunities that each presenter handled professionally and with humility. The questioning ranged from the simply inquisitive to what might be characterized as a courtroom cross-examination. And as I looked around, our attorney for the prosecution isn't with us this evening. There were at least two volunteers, academy alumni, who were at each session to assist, answer questions, provide beverages, and snacks for all in attendance. Sometimes the snacks were somewhat overwhelming. They ranged from literally a full dinner for all the participants to the kinds of things that contain more than sufficient cholesterol, sugar, salt, the kinds of things you don't go home and tell your spouse or your partner that you ate. It was apparent that Lieutenant Considine, who is here this evening, prepared the instructors so that they would have a good sense of what would be appropriate for the participants. This guidance was obviously detailed and included everything from pre-screening video vignettes to reviewing the wording and the font size on the presenter's slide. Each instructor told us about his or her background, as well as their experiences in interaction with the array of people they have encountered while performing their duties. I want to emphasize that the most compelling aspect of their anecdotes wasn't about the kinds of things that are not accurately portrayed on television and in movies, things like high-speed car traces and tracking down America's most-wanted criminals. It was obvious that they knew, that they had the experience, the know-how, and the capabilities to do that extremely well. What we were consistently impressed with was that the officers and the department's leaderships, and the department's leadership's empathy, compassion, sensitivity, and respect for each and every individual they met while performing their duties. Their commitment to honor, integrity, and ethical performance was obvious. In closing, the 22nd Harwich Police Department Citizens Police Academy participants are sincerely appreciative and will be eternally grateful, as all Harwich citizens should be, that we are protected and served by more than the 40 officers and the staff of the Harwich Police Department. And for that, we thank you.
Thank you very much. It's very nice.
Hi, Ginny Hewitt again. I'm back. I also attended the Citizens Police Academy. So, I wanted to read something from one of our attendees, Dave Mahan, who couldn't be here tonight. He says, "It is safe to say that everyone in the academy class was impressed, not only with the curriculum, but with the exceptional competence, commitment, and camaraderie of the officers and the staff that delivered it. It was truly an eye-opening experience that showcased and defined contemporary policies and practices addressing public safety and community policing. A fabulous program of best practices has been developed, executed, and managed by talented and committed department. You can't beat that. We are proud and supportive, and I'm sure the town is as well." So, that's from Dave Mahan. And I wanted to say, personally, I also, I'd heard a lot of good things about the Citizens Police Academy over the years, so I expected to enjoy it, but I was even more impressed than I expected to be. And one of the things I really took away, like others have said, was the whole community policing philosophy that really permeates the department and everything that they do. They're not looking to bust people. They're trying to make relationships in the community and, you know, to keep us safe. And every week, we had a, we would start the Thursday night sessions where people could talk about their ride-along experience, and, boy, did they. What was the longest, Kevin, maybe, seems like 20, 25 was timing one. And so, he started to try to say, "Could we have a brief report?" And nothing happened. Nothing really eventful would have happened on the shift, but they would still, you know, everyone was so impressed with, you know, how they look out for people in the community. And I know for myself, I've had a few incidents this fall at the library that things we witnessed, or someone with maybe some issues that we thought could use some assistance, that I had staff call the police department about where I wouldn't have before. And, you know, things that seem minor might, a few weeks ago, someone hit the telephone pole right across from the library, but, you know, no damage done, and they backed off and drove away. And, but they may need to put that together, with that person may have driven down to Shaw's and hit a parked car. And so, you know, every little bit helps, and they really want to know what's going on in the community. So, I think one of the best things that comes out of this is now there are 30 more citizens that are active and engaged partners for the police department, and that's magnified, because we're spreading the word to our family members, our friends, our neighbors, our coworkers. And I would assume that's the goal of a Citizens Police Academy, to try to get citizens more informed and engaged with the police department. And I also want to say, I know the tremendous time and effort that has to go into this, rescheduling all the different speakers, and, you know, as a 24/7 operation, that can't be easy. That's a huge, huge task. And so, it takes a big commitment on their part, and it's really appreciated. I wanted the residents and the selectmen to know how capable and professional the police department is, and the town should be very proud of the department and all the officers. And I wanted to say thank you to the chief and lieutenant, who are both here tonight.
Thank you very much, Ginny. And I think that...
Stan Pastus, Harwich resident. First of all, before, about the academy, I'd like to thank all of our police officers and all our fire department for everything they do every day for us. It's fantastic. They have a tough job, and I'm very proud of all of them. I especially came to, again, support the police academy, which I attended. And I can't even say very much more after the job Mark did. He was so, he just hit it right on the head. I mean, there's nothing else I can say beyond what he's already done and what Ginny said. And other than to thank the chief, lieutenant, and Officer Patel, and all the other members who participated in this.
Thank you. Good evening.
I'll be brief. Sorry. My name's Brad Willis. I'm a Harwich resident and also a member of the Harwich Fire Department. I'm a firefighter paramedic. I'm here to announce the 2018 Homeless for the Holidays program. This is the fourth year that we've been involved in this program. It will be starting Wednesday, December 5, at 8:00 in the morning, and it'll run continuous through Sunday, December 9, until 3:00 in the afternoon. Turns to be 103 continuous hours. This, overall, this is the 18th year of the program. It was started in the town of Bourne back in 2000 by firefighter/paramedic Craig Porrier. And since that time, the program has grown to be basically Cape-wide at this point. There's eight different sites throughout the Cape, from Bourne to Provincetown this year. If anybody read the paper today, they saw the article concerning the Family Pantry and also Toys for Tots. As a paramedic and working for the fire department, you know, we go to houses across the economic spectrum. We see the help that a lot of these people need. So, it was a no-brainer when we were asked to be a part of this program to help out the people that are in our own town. The Family Pantry, I guess, has capped out their vouchers for the year at $1,000, which is just unfathomable. You know, they also mentioned that the toy drive at the Family Pantry has tripled over the last five years. So, there really is a big need, not only for toys, but also for food donations and cash donations, which goes a long way for them to actually purchase meals through their program where they get discounted rates. So, at Brooks Park, we will be accepting new unwrapped toys for the Family Pantry's toy drive, and we'll also be giving some of those toys to the Toys for Tots program. But we'll also be accepting non-perishable food items for the new, for the Family Pantry and monetary donations for the Family Pantry. Gift cards are a big deal for older kids, because a lot of times the toys that are donated to these programs tend to be for the younger kids only. So, if you're thinking about trying to do something outside the box, gift cards is a great idea. Really, the toy problem, I think, stems from Toys R Us closing and also Bennys. So, I encourage people to think outside the box when looking for toys. I know I've been in grocery stores and also different department stores where they have toys. Also, I know we have a number of great local toy shops that people should look into purchasing if they're interested. Just briefly give you our totals for the last three years. I've been keeping track, so the towns or the donators have graciously donated 3,485 toys, 7,500 pounds of non-perishable food, and just shy of $19,000 in cash checks and gift cards. And all that money has gone to the Family Pantry. So, just a thanks to all in the community who have donated. Also, a thank you to the police department administration, along with the fire department administration. They've both been extremely generous to us and supportive of the program. And I encourage anybody in the community to come down. We're there hanging out, like I said, 24 hours a day. Come down, meet your firefighter and police officers, and we'll do a good thing for the community again this year, so thank you.
Thank you very much, and we appreciate all your efforts on behalf of the town. Ed?
Yeah, I'd just like to take a few minutes to thank a number of people. Recently, last Tuesday, down across from Sacquetucket Harbor, we had the ribbon-cutting of the new Outer Cape Health Clinic. Both Mr. Ballantyne and I serve on the board of that agency, and I've been serving as the chair of their building committee. It was an amazing event with over 150 people. I want to thank Cindy and the chamber for providing a lot of support for us to put that ribbon-cutting on. We were lucky Congressman Keating was there to give sort of the keynote speech. His office has been critical in securing funding and grants and loan approvals to make the whole process possible. Over this weekend, we closed the Little House on Chatham Road, and to this morning, opened up at the new location of the old Thompson's Farm Market. Our IT staff spent the weekend in two long 16-hour days, taking down all of the IT from the site on Chatham Road and moving it over. And also, because tomorrow, we start the demolition of the old clinic in Wellfleet. We will be rebuilding that. They had to relocate the IT infrastructure there, part to Provincetown and part to Harwich, to keep the whole system working. We are very happy. First patient showed up at 8:00, and we're welcomed by some very happy staff people to have a new state-of-the-art facility to see them in. If you haven't, if you have a chance, stop by and walk in and take a look. It's a big change from what it used to be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. And I think on behalf of the board, I'd also like to thank all the members of the community who participated in the Police Department Citizens Academy, because we know we have a terrific police department and fire department. It's great to know that we have so many people in the community willing to learn and see what our departments are up to. So, we thank you for that participation. Ed?
As a selectman, I think I participated in the 15th session of the police academy, and it is well worth it for all citizens to participate in.
We'll move on now to the consent agenda, Ed.
Yes, I'd like to present the consent agenda and move acceptance of the items thereon, to accept the resignation of Steve Graffy as an elected member of the Monomoy Regional School Committee, effective November 27, 2018. To accept the resignation of Sandra Woodbridge as an elected member of the Harwich Housing Authority, effective immediately. Just a side note, Sandra Woodbridge has been appointed by the governor as the governor's appointee to the housing authority, so she will, in actuality, continue with the housing authority. And to approve the Mauring Servicing Agent renewals for 2019 on the recommendation of the harbor minister.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion by the board? Ed?
Aye.
Michael?
Aye.
I know. I was asking faddie questions before Ed answered aye.
I have no questions.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on to public hearings and presentations. Annual meetings, we have the library trustees. Good evening.
Good evening.
Just say your name, Mary.
Yes, I'm Mary Ward. I'm currently serving as the Chair of the Board of Trustees at Brooks Library. I'd like to introduce other trustees that are here this evening. Joan McCarty, Jeanne Wheeler, Joanne Brown, William Crowell, and Ann Emerson. Our other trustee, Kathleen Remmel, I couldn't be with us this evening. As you know, we're an elected seven-member board, and we serve three-year terms that overlap. The trustees you see before you have all completed the state-manded ethics training. And our meetings are held the second Wednesday of every month over at the library in the Thornton Room at 7:00 p.m. And all agendas and the full packets of minutes are reported, and reports are posted online on the library website and the town website as well. I know you have your report that was included in your packet. I'm not going to go through every little bullet, but I'm just going to highlight a few things. But before I begin, the board would like to begin by sincerely thanking every member of the Brooks Library staff for another strong, creative, and productive year administering quality library services to our community. Brooks Library continues to be the second busiest library on the Cape and Islands. Cultural, educational, and informational programming remain strong, remain strong components of library service, as does technology assistance and instruction. We continue to provide outreach services, some of which include Monomoy Regional Schools and the Harwich Council on Aging, as well as collaborating with the Chamber of Commerce, Harwich Historical Society, the Recreation and Youth Department, and Channel 18. The board also wishes to acknowledge and thank our library director, Ginny Hewitt, for her continued dedication to professional excellence throughout the year. It is an honor and a pleasure for this board to work with Ginny and experience firsthand her commitment... her commitment to library services and our community. Thank you, Ginny. So as we move on, we are very happy to report that the preservation work on the exterior two historic portions of the library is nearly done, narrowly completed. And we are delighted to report that. Project Manager Sean Libby has updated us today, reporting that the painting is done and that a walkthrough with a punch list will be conducted this Wednesday with the contractor and all parties involved. So we are getting close and we're just very, very pleased. We think, just to see the columns go back up and to see them look so beautiful is very encouraging. As you know, securing funding for this project has been a major focus of the trustees for a number of years. We much appreciate the support of the Selectmen, the Town Administrator, the Community Preservation Committee, the Historic District, the Capital Outlay Committee, the Finance Committee, and of course, the voters for the additional Community Preservation Act funding for the project at last town meeting in May. There's one little correction to the report that you have received, and it's about the full-building generator that we have reported we have received. And when in fact, what we have received is the transfer switch. As you know, you approved the full-building generator. I guess it was signed by the Selectmen in June and we were hoping to have it installed by September, but delivery of the generator was delayed because of various hurricane issues in different parts of the country, so we had to put a weight on that. So the contractor is, and the electricians are now installing the transfer switch and the wiring for the generator, which we hope arrives in hopefully a few weeks, but as soon as possible, so it'll be ready just to put in place. There are many people to thank in addition to our permanent and part-time staff at the library. And one of those, of course, are our volunteers. This past year, 96 volunteers performed over 3,400 hours of volunteer service for the library, shelving materials, straightening and organizing shelves, coordinating and leading programs, and many other functions. We really are extremely grateful for their efforts and they are, make an extraordinary contribution to our program. The Harwich Garden Club continues to provide floral arrangements every month, as they have for decades, and they also maintain a beautiful landscaped eiling in the back parking lot, as well as the two blooming barrels in the front of the library. The Friends, the Friends of the Brooks Free Library, support the library in numerous ways, paying for the many special programs and activities for our summer reading program for children and youth, funding our leased book collection to provide additional copies of bestsellers, paying for passes for free or discounted admission to museums and attraction, raising funds for our assistive technology program for people with vision loss, and providing the very popular for Sunday programs from September to June. And in addition, the Friends also manage our Books on Wheels Homebound Delivery Program, which uses volunteer drivers to deliver books and materials to Harwich residents who aren't able to independently visit the library in person. The Woodworkers Group, and the Woodworkers Group of Chatham, Harwich newcomers this year built and installed shelving for our hold shelf, an area adjacent to the circulation desk. In November, they installed a matching workstation for the self-checkout station and a lovely bench under the window. These pieces, all coordinated and custom-built, greatly enhanced the appearance of this highly visible and heavily utilized area. The Harwich Fire Association assisted us to procure a state-of-the-art automated external defibrillator, an AED. The new defibrillator is fully accessible and includes audible instructions, which walk the user through the process of using the machine without requiring any further training. Angelina Chalaka of the American Heart Association has, excuse me, has provided CPR and AED training to permanent staff members. And also the Harwich Accessibilities Rights Committee, the fact that they ensured that the library was included in the Americans with Disability Act self-assessment. We are committed to providing equal access to everyone, so we appreciate the independent review of facilities, programs, and services, so that we can remedy any deficiency and continue to improve access and services. I know in your packet you received two pieces of information on numbers of items borrowed and we have some statistics here that we're certainly happy to speak about. I wanted to make mention just quickly of an anniversary that's just happened, and it's a 30-year anniversary of CLAMs. We talk about CLAMs all the time, and it stands for Cape Libraries Automated Materials Sharing. This is a nonprofit cooperative association of libraries on Cape Cod, Martha's Vineyard, and Nantucket. And they, it started in 1988 and Brooks Library was one of the six charter members for this association. And what it allows us to do as CLAMs members is to share resources through the entire network by having CLAMs terminals located in each member library. It allows you to borrow books and materials from all other member libraries, and actually you can access over 1.6 million items. So it really changed the landscape, the world of information sharing in our area, so that from your computer or from the library, home or not, you could put in a request for materials from a library that you would not be able to travel to, and they will be delivered to you at your local library. So it is an extraordinary association and we have been members since 1988. And I believe that they have, just back in 2017, the number of checkouts for books and DVDs and other materials by CLAMs users was over, was almost 3 million. So it is an extraordinary service, 30 years going, and allows us to widen our world for receiving information and for research. So with the graphs, our statistics on library services, for people who are not at home, I'll only just briefly read. For books, movies, ebooks, audio, e-audio, and other items checked out, 223, 840 items for this past year. The use of electronic resources, 25,278. Attendance at 727 programs for children and youth, 14,181. Attendance at 551 programs for adults, 4,046. Currently patrons with a Brooks Free Library card, 13,410. And reference questions responded to during the past year, 18,304. So we are a very busy library and we're very proud of our services and we're continually striving to improve them and reach out to the community whenever possible to make sure that we're on top of what the community needs for information services. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have before I knock this completely off.
Thank you very much, Mary. Great report. Larry?
Mary, what an, the rest of the people, what a great asset the library is. I will point out that your vision impaired technology must be the leader on the Cape in that category. And I think, I don't know if Carla's here, but I know she has a lot to do with it. Just a comment, because we're involved with the, you know, you mentioned the ADA activities we're in, and it's nice that, that is, that really stands out. The question I have is, you refer to the hooking up to Open Cape.
Yes.
And how that enhances the use of CLAMs and so on. I think the inference is at least, and I think you state this, that there's still some structural things that need to be done to fully utilize Open Cape. If that's true, what do you have yet to do to take advantage of it?
Well, I'll have Ginny assist me with that, but I believe it has to do with just upgrading the wiring, that's some of which has been there, locating outlets, upgrading wiring. It's been there perhaps since 98, since the renovation, just to provide...
So it's usable in a reasonable way then.
So exactly, and the renovation was, in addition, was 1996 to 98. So I, I think like, so I started here in 99 and there are enough data jacks around the building somewhat. I don't think it was, it wasn't that it wasn't thought of. I don't think it was envisioned how much it would explode. So what we have in a lot of areas is you've got a data jack on the wall with a cable going to a hub or a switch to another cable or, you know, like daisy chained of things. We've got Cat 5 cable duct taped along ceiling and things like this. So, so in other words, you're not going to get the speed from Open Cape at the individual terminals because it's the internal wiring in the building that's the problem. So I know the town has a contract with Barnstable County Information Technology to do an assessment, and I think that's still in process. We haven't been contacted yet. I think we're doing all right. When I, when I talked to the gentleman who'll be doing it after the last department head meeting and talked to him about we have zero clients for our public computers for adults, which has really reduced the cost and different things like that, he seemed, oh, well, that's great, like we are pretty on top of those things. What we need really is that internal, the infrastructure within the building assessment. And so I assume, you know, his assessment now, maybe overall, it'll just be some notes that it needs to be looked into. I'm sure it's the same in Town Hall, age is probably a factor in IT in this building too.
The benefits of Open Cape are there.
So the benefits of Open Cape, what's great, what happened last year was our staff have been on Open Cape for several years. We've had, we've always had two networks in the building, the public network and the network for staff computers, which we get as part of our CLAMs membership. And so CLAMs has been on Open Cape for several years, but our public was still using the free Comcast connection. And that was like, that's a free residential connection for like 25 computers plus all the Wi-Fi users, so clearly that wasn't good. And so CLAMs Library's got a steep discount from Open Cape because one of the reasons libraries were anchor institutions in the Open Cape grant that they got from the federal government was to provide public access. We really weren't doing that because the access got used for the staff computers, and so the public wasn't really seeing the benefit. So now they are. And one of the best things to me about, for that is that with the microwave backup system is we'll have that redundancy in storms. And once we get our generator in, we're not going to be open in the middle of a blizzard, but shortly after, and we would have service where other providers may be down.
Thank you.
Michael?
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. Ed?
Well, just a comment to follow up on what Larry said when we had the folks in from the, who helped us with the self-assessment on the disabilities review. One of the comments of the woman who does these all over the Commonwealth said that her opinion is that they're going to be recommending through the Brooks Library, vital program is the standard going forward.
You all do a fantastic job and I think we're very lucky to have the library that we have. I know that when I was at the Mass Municipal Conference, I think I said this before, they were raving about how lucky we are to have Ginny and how much, you know, we benefit as our community for such a great library that offers so many programs, not only for the young kids, but, you know, the middle-aged and aging population. It's really fantastic, so we appreciate all you do.
Thank you. I just want to say, we appreciate the town's support. It's like a chicken and an egg thing. We couldn't do it without the staffing and the resources, and we have that. So, and obviously, the community has responded and wants and needs those services, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Board of Health presentation, annual meeting.
Good evening. Pamela Howell, Chair of the Board of Health. I wanted to thank the Board of Selectmen for giving us the opportunity to meet with you tonight. In particular, I wanted to thank our liaison, Larry Ballantyne, for being a steady presence at our meetings. Thank you. During this past year, all members have been sworn in, taken their state ethics course. There are no recurrent absences and all meetings are posted and advertised in accordance with the open meeting law. Also, meeting minutes are voted and available to the public for past meeting online, as well as in hard copy at the Health Department. 2018 has been challenging year for the Board of Health on many fronts. Looking back at the past year, the Health Board's actions last year relating to piggies being declared a noisome trade, as well as other farm and environmental actions taken with regard to the Papreno property resulted in a large legal action being filed by the property owners against many town boards, including the Board of Health. Our cooperation with the town's lawyers is ongoing. There has been many conversations concerning the transition of East Harwich to municipal searing. Much of the conversation has focused on the Board getting a better understanding of its role in the process. While the Health Director has been involved at the staff level, some critical actions require policy development, which can only be addressed by the vote of the Board itself. We voted to raise the legal purchase age of tobacco products from 18 to 21 years old. This would cover sales to anyone within the town of Harwich. Looking into the new year, we are focusing on holding hearings to assess needed policy actions, which will be required to address the public's concerns about searing process. The likely outcome will be policies to address situations where a Title V system has failed on a property, which would be shortly converted to a sewer hookup. And the public also would expect policies to address allowable time to make a hookup in the event of a financial hardship or on a property where only recently they had a new Title V installation. But we will have a better idea of the needed actions once the public hearings are held. We anticipate this will be in place as the system begins to be built out on the municipal side next spring, and I want the public to know that this will be a very high priority for us. In conjunction with the policy development for searing, we will be looking into fertilizer use regulations and guidelines to reduce nitrogen runoff as required by the Comprehensive Waste Water Management Plan that was proposed by the town and approved by the county and the State Department of Environmental Protection. And at this time, I would like to recognize the other Board members, Frank Boyle, our Vice Chair, Cynthia Taft-Baylor, and Matthew Cushing, MD. I would note, as we enter the year with a vacancy on the Board, while we haven't had any major quorum problems, we are hoping someone from the community steps up to serve the town in this crucial area. We do understand how important our actions are to the town as a whole, so our eagerness to fill the vacancy is balanced with a concern that we get a motivated and dedicated new appointee. So if anyone is watching this meeting and would like to give back their time and knowledge, please consider filling out a Citizens Committee vacancy form at the Selectman Administrator's office. And finally, let me tell you, it's been an honor serving the town of Harwich this past year.
Thank you very much. Questions from the Board? Ed?
I have none. Thank you.
Larry?
No, great job.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the focus on East Harwich and the sewer, searing process. We're going to need that help. Thank you.
And now the annual meeting with the Board of Appeals.
Good evening. Dave Ryer. We had the submission in your packet. I don't know if you got the update through last Wednesday's meeting, but currently we have seven members, five regulars, two alternates, which seems to be adequate. We can have up to five and certainly we'd welcome new people, but with this current number of seven, we seem to be able to get a five-person Board at at least 11 of our meetings. If we have less than five, the four members present will have to vote unanimously in favor of a petition in order for it to be approved. We will, if we only have four members, offer the applicant the opportunity to continue the case until the next hearing. Very few of them decide to do that, always surprising to me, but they're happy to roll the dice with four of us. This year, we had 35 applications. I apologize, I forgot to look and see how many we had last year. It's roughly equivalent, 29 or 30, I believe. The vast majority, as always, are special permits. We granted 26. Two were withdrawn. The way it works, both on special permits and on variances, if there's a sense from the discussion that the Board members are inclined not to support it, we will allow the applicant to take a straw poll and then they can make a motion to withdraw. That gives them a chance to go back and talk to their architect or whoever they're working with to see... to see if they can come within the legal parameters to get whatever it is they're looking for, whether it's a special permit or a variance. Variances, we had three. It's a very hard legal test to beat under Chapter Forty, the Mass General Laws. One was granted, one was withdrawn, one was denied. The only real thing of note, we did have one appeal from a decision to the Superior Court. Uh, we have, um, through Mr. Clark engaged Town Council to represent the town. On these suits, the Town Council will make the necessary filings, but we really do very little. It's up to the applicant to move the case forward and do whatever is required to get the decision upheld. And that keeps the expense down for the town. Frankly, the town's made its decision. We thought this applicant did a good job. Um, it's down in the, um, the old campgrounds. And that's always an issue down there. There's parking issues. Uh, the lots are small. They're all close together. So there's very often a lot of opposition from neighbors. But on a special permit, the test is whether the, uh, the proposal will be a substantial detriment to the neighborhood as opposed to a few neighbors. Um, the neighbors don't like to hear that, but that's the, the legal test. That's about it. No fortyBs this year, mercifully. Um, as you can see from reading the Cape Cod Times, there are, there have been a number of fortyBs on the Cape and several of those have resulted in lawsuits. And those are ones the town will have to spend some significant dollars to defend. So we were happy with the one in two thousand and seventeen. That habitat prevailed. And I'm not sure their timetable. I think they're going to build next year down on twenty-eight across from, roughly across from Terry's Beauty Parlor Hair Station there.
Yeah, in West Harwich, right.
Yes. So we were happy to see that one get approved. It was a three to two vote. It was a close issue, but it was approved. Uh, I'll answer any questions that I can.
Thank you. Uh, Ed, any questions?
Just a comment. It's, you know, it's, it, uh, we've potentially avoided getting embroiled in a lawsuit over a fortyB. But also by not having any applications come forward, we also have expanded, taken steps to expand the availability of affordable housing in our town, which is a great need.
Well, I've been on the board ten years now and we've always approved everyone that's come before us. They met the requirements and they were all, I thought, good projects personally. The neighbors don't like fortyBs and I, you know, if I said once, I said it five or six times. That's a matter for the state legislature, not the Harwich Board of Appeals. They all profess love for the particular project, but they hate fortyB because it's going to be built in their neighborhood. So, uh, that's just a fact of life. There's nothing we at a town level can do about that. It's up to the state. Thank you.
Oh, hold on one moment. I just want to ask the other board members if they have any questions for you.
No questions. Just thank you.
Larry?
Yeah, thank you as well.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your report. Okay, um, the public hearing, proposed fee amendments to the harbor management plan. And Ed, would you read the public hearing?
Notice of public hearing, proposed fee amendments. Harwich Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on December third, two thousand and eighteen, no earlier than six thirty P.M. in the Don B. Griffin Room located at Town Hall, seven thirty-two Main Street, Harwich. For the purpose of reviewing proposed fee amendments to the harbor management plan, all members of the public having an interest in this topic are virtually invited to attend a public hearing and provide information and testimony relative, relevant to this issue. Sign the members of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Ed. Good evening, John.
Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. John Rendell, Harbor Master. Um, I have two fee amendment proposals to present this evening. Uh, the first one, um, I'd like to discuss a winter rate for recreational boaters. You've seen in my, in, in the packet, my proposal, I'll just briefly, if I can, go through it. You know, currently, um, at Sacquetucket Marina, we have a, a seasonal period for recreational boaters. And that seasonal period runs from May first through November fifteenth. And after November fifteenth, um, really the only boaters that are currently allowed to be in the harbor throughout the winter are commercial fleet, commercial fishermen, our charter boats, and our passenger boats. They all have year-round permits. And, um, and now that we have, um, a new marina with very sturdy, stable docks, um, new Greenheart piles, um, we've been dredged. We have significant capacity to provide the option for recreational boaters if they want to stay in the water year-round. And we do have, um, every year I get requests of people who are interested in, in staying in the water. You know, if you just look at this past week, we have, we've had warm weather and people can still be using their boat if they were allowed to, to stay in the harbor. If we do this, as I clearly state in, in the proposal, priority will always be the commercial fleet. We have, um, we have about ten to fifteen permitted commercial boats that stay in the water. Some, some usually, some of our, our permitted commercial boats fish elsewhere. Um, some haul out and some stay in Sacquetucket and, and fish throughout the winter. In addition to that, we have on average about fifteen or so, um, commercial boats that come from other towns. Large majority of them come from Chatham, but there are some from Wellfleet and, uh, and other places. And that, that will always be the priority. But, you know, that combined is about, you know, thirty or thirty-five slips. And we have a total of sixty, forty-foot slips and another seventy, thirty-foot slips. We have the capacity. And because we have a commercial fleet that operates out of the marina year-round, we are, we do our best to put bubbler system now to keep the waterways from freezing and to keep our marina open and operational year-round to support those that are operating out of Sacquetucket. The more activity that frankly we have at operating within the, within the harbor, the better and the easier it is to keep it clear of, of ice building up and frankly, uh, keep some of the birds off our docks. Frank, you know, that's a big problem. We laugh at it, but you should go look at our west dock right now. With little activity, it becomes a mess. So I'm proposing that we, um, it, we, we have a winter rate for recreational boaters and that winter rate is twenty-four dollars a foot. It's the same rate that we are currently charging our visiting, uh, commercial fleet. The commercial fleet, in addition to that dockage rate, pay an offloading fee because they're using our, our bulkheads and our, and our facilities to, uh, to bring their catch in. But, um, you know, I don't think it'll be heavy use for the first year or so. But I do think, um, I, I, I do think people will take advantage of it. And so the priority will be obviously the commercial fleet. And the next priority will be our current slip permit holders. And then the next priority, and on a first come, first served basis, is any visiting recreational boaters that want to keep their boat in the water. So if there's any questions, I certainly can answer them.
Any questions from the board? Larry?
I don't. Well-thought-out plan.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, you're right. Any, any questions from the public?
Mitch Tischler, a, you know, Harwich resident. And I'm a recreational boater that has been fortunate to be at Sacquetucket for twenty-five-plus years. I sail year-round and I have for all those years. It's at this time of the year that I have to set off and find another place to keep my boat for the winter. So most recently, I've been doing that at Chatham. We're blessed, like John said, with a lot of balmy days at this time of the year. That's the beautiful thing about the Cape. So for me, it's like, well, why would I take my boat out of the water? It's the safest place for a boat to be and why wrap it in plastic? And so, um, we're out sailing on the holiday days and, you know, with my family, my friends. So winter usage for me is, is really, um, is my, I mean, my, my season goes year-round. And, um, it's really nice to be in Sacquetucket for the months that the recreational boaters are allowed to be there. But it really would be something to seriously consider to allow us to have that opportunity to go year-round. Because we're not looking at, well, myself, I'm not looking for storage for the winter. I'm, I'm, it's, it's usage. And, um, I did that for many years down in Falmouth out of McDougall's. But it's a big drive for me to go down to Falmouth. So then I kind of made an arrangement with the guys over at Stage Harbor at, at Bridge Street. But really, quite frankly, it's just, you know, we have such a beautiful harbor and it's, it's, it's the harbor to come out of. And like John said, the more activity that we have in the harbor, it's going to be easier to keep it open. And yeah, you ought to take a walk down the west dock right now because the more usage we have on the dock, it's just going to keep them cleaner. So, um, I'm just happy to have an opportunity to share that with you. But I do use my boat year-round and I'd love to be able to stay in Harwich. It's where I live. Um, and also be able to, you know, provide some revenue to the town. So.
Thank you very much. Anybody else like to speak? No? Larry, do you have any questions?
No, I think it's well-thought-out planning. And I actually don't want to walk down and see it.
Michael?
I have no questions. Great idea.
Ed?
I haven't been a boat owner here on the Cape, but when I was living in the San Francisco Bay Area, I owned a boat and kept it at a marina, which was open year-round. And so when I moved back here in August and all of a sudden, a couple of months later, all of a sudden everybody was pulling their boats out, it seemed very strange to me. Because even back in, uh, San Francisco Bay, um, some of the best and some of the worst boating days happen during the winter. You get some amazingly, uh, clear, uh, flat with just a breeze and it's just wonderful to be out sailing. So I think your concept of opening for recreational boaters to be able to be in the harbor is a great idea.
And, and John, to this gentleman's point, um, this will relieve some of the, the issues we had with boat storage too for the larger, the sailboats with the larger keels or?
Well, I, I don't know. I mean, it may, you know, I mean, some of the boats with, with masks, like Mr. Tischler, you know, uh, may want to stay in one year and get hauled out in the spring and put right back in. Uh, and, but I just don't have a sense how much relief it would be or whether it will be. But, you know, many people like Mitch want to, want to sail on, on clear days. So.
No, I think it's a great opportunity and, you know, we've got this beautiful harbor and it'd be a great way to have revenues for the town. Do you see it as any kind of, and probably not, because anybody going out during the winter months is probably a good boater. But is there any worry or concern for, you know, any kind of tax that it will put on your, your services in terms of people going out maybe in difficult weather in the winter?
I mean, I guess you always have that risk, but we keep our boat in the water year-round. So we have a twenty-four-seven response, three hundred and sixty-five. So we're there. Uh, we have that response and Coast Guard is available. So I don't see it as a big.
Okay. Great. Okay. Michael?
John, you mentioned you had two asks tonight, two fee changes.
Yes, yes, sir.
So the first one is the in the water. The second one related to the passenger boats?
Yes.
Okay. And has that, um, the passenger boat one, you've spoken obviously to all of the passenger boats. Has there been any, is it all positive feedback to add to two thousand?
I have. I've, I've, you know, this has been a long time coming. And we've had discussions started, you know, a year and a half ago on this. And, um, so, um, every one of the four that are affected, it's the Ferry and the Yankee, the Captain Kidd and, and the Perseverance. Um, as I stated in my memo, very cooperative. I think everybody sees what we're doing at Sacquetucket and the fact that, that the ticket booths will be in a location that is close to available parking, close to our boardwalks, our walkways, our ramps that are all handicap accessible. The traffic flow with our new design just makes sense. And I think, I think they all realize that. And I will say, they all have agreed, um, to invest in that. You know, they are purchasing the sheds there themselves. They're paying to have an electrician come and hook up their power. We're providing power to the location, but then they're going from there and hooking up into their shed. So there, there is an investment being made. But they also know that they're utilizing town property and with that comes, comes a fee. And so we've tried to strike what I think is a very, um, fair and, and reasonable fee. Everybody, all four of the, of the owners have received this memo. They've, we've had the discussions. Everybody but one kind of looked and say, well, is that too much or can, you know, um, but has agreed with it and agreed to move forward. So it's no surprise.
Thank you, John.
Sure.
Larry?
Uh, moving then, uh, to, uh, to the ticket booth, um, you know, I, I agree. It's a good-looking plan. My question is, we've always encouraged the Freedom Boat to park across the street. It looks, it looks like this would do the opposite, encourage him all to park on the, you know, on the south side of twenty-eight rather than their parking lot. Will they, will they try to maintain that parking area? Or how's that, or at least encourage it?
Well, you know, a, as you know, one of my biggest concerns is the amount of pedestrians crossing Route twenty-eight after they go get a ticket and park over there. Um, and we're trying to eliminate that. We won't totally eliminate it. The day, the day trippers are allowed to park at Sacquetucket and we've never tried to push them across. The people who go across and park and, in the parking lot across the street are those that take the ferry overnight. And that will remain. There is going to be no overnight parking. There is no overnight parking allowed. And, you know, we, we try to police it as best we can. We don't, we, we're not a hundred percent. You know, we see people getting out with luggage. We know they're probably staying overnight and we tell them, hey, you got to park across the street. Um, Jack and his staff do a great job of trying to make sure that they identify those overnighters and they park, um, across the street. And that will remain. But all the day trippers will be parking, you know, on the Downey property where the ticket booth is. They park there, get their ticket and they walk through the walkways to the boats. So.
Okay. That, that seems like a good, I mean, our balance has always been to utilize a full parking area we have.
Right.
And yet we have the crossing twenty-eight problem that we're, we continue to try to work at stoplights or something. It makes that much better. But, okay.
Michael?
We're all set. I'll make a motion.
Ed, you?
Well, just, just a question. Um, on the diagram you included in the, um, showing the, the parking space layout, um, there's the, apparently a, a ramp connecting the Downey property to our existing parking area. Uh, where that ramp comes into the existing area, there used to be parking in that little square. Is that, that all going to be eliminated?
I'm not real clear on what you're talking about. Um, but let me, if you're talking about the bullpen area, what I call the bullpen area as you drive in to the left.
Yeah, yeah.
That, that's going to be available parking.
Okay, okay.
Right? We've graded the groundy, the Downey property to that level.
Okay.
And that will remain. The connection is the, is the timber boardwalk that has been built where the old walking trail used to be.
Yeah. No, it's just on the diagram. You didn't show any of the, I just wanted to make sure. It seemed like you may have to eliminate some for the driveway connection, but, um, uh, not all of it. Yeah.
That driveway connection, I'll, I'll put a bollard there during the season. I don't want people flowing through there during the season. I really put that in anticipation of. I really put that in anticipation of potential boat storage down the line to be able to have that access so people don't have to take their boats on 28 under the guide wires. So that was really the purpose for that.
And in terms of this, the overlay on the map, we still have sufficient turning if we were to move to a situation where we've talked about parking and having our parking committee and shuttle buses, to bring a shuttle bus in and flow easily through that parking area?
The former Downey property does have a traffic flow that would allow for buses or other vehicles to have people park in the wintertime or for different events.
Okay, all right, great. Okay, so, yeah?
And then just one other. Oh, shit.
Shoot.
Shoot. I'm going to have to pass. I had it all queued up to ask and, oh, well.
It's gone?
It's gone.
Just before there's a potential vote, I know John and I had had a discussion about the date of the fee and the fee going into place.
Oh, thanks, thank you.
So I just wanted to, we were concerned that because the boat owners have to pay for the sheds, that we were thinking about delaying that, is that?
Yeah, as I said, they're incurring some costs. So my proposal would be to implement this, not this coming boating season, but the next boating season, 2020. Just because they have, you know, they have some costs building up and getting their sheds in place, et cetera, so.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Absolutely.
Michael?
I move that we approve the proposed fee amendments to the harbor management plan, including the winter rate of $24 per foot from November 15th through May 1st and the additional $2,000 facility fee for the Class F and Class D permits to commence on, for the 2020 boating season.
Second.
The first part of it is right away, just to be clear.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Only the $2,000 is for 2020.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Just if I may?
Yeah.
John, thank you again and thank you for your continued efforts in finding money to pay for all of this. You've done an outstanding job with that harbor.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, 2019 Cranberry Valley Rates and Fees Recommendation. No, that's great.
Thank you, good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Roman Greer, I'm the Director of Golf at Cranberry Valley Golf Course. I'm joined by Clem Smith, the Golf Committee Chairperson for Harwich. So our rates and fee recommendations for 2019 are fairly simple. We did a competitive fee analysis, the shows were appropriately placed in the marketplace. We hit all-time revenue goals in FY '18, so we raised our membership fees last year and our, many of our greens fees last year, so that did lead to all-time high in revenue. We also have had increases in total members for three straight years, so a lot of facility usage at Cranberry Valley. What our needs are for this year is we were anticipating a new electric cart fleet, so we were hoping to generate an estimated $20,000 in addition to what we're currently generating for cart fees to cover the anticipated cost of that new lease. So in general, what we're recommending for 2019 is to raise cart fees by $1, all of all cart fees. That would raise about approximately $20,000 we would need to cover the cost of the new cart fleet. And then just tweak a few fees, weekday greens fees in September, $60 was 44, that's a highly demanded time. And a new time on our twilight fee in October and new opportunity for juniors to play in the morning. This, these fees, we hope will accomplish all of our goals, continue giving us the ability to get a lot of facility usage and hit our revenue goals. And we're hoping that this will not stress the golf market too much locally. And then I, some of the slides I've included just shows our market analysis. It shows where we stand locally with the other municipalities. We did hold a public rates and fees hearing October 15th, we attracted with the public on rates and fees.
Great, thank you. Any comments on, oh, no, this isn't public, so.
No, it's not.
Larry?
I don't, that's good.
Michael?
No, I just, I would ask that next time we put the public hearing notice in here, that was my question, is whether we had a public hearing, whether it was advertised correctly.
Yes, it was, okay. I will.
Ed, do you have any questions?
So the fees that are being proposed are the cart fees?
I think, so we're proposing the full sheet of fees that are attached, but I just highlighted the changes. The change is another $1 increase in all of the cart fees and then the remainder of the fees would stay the same as 2018. On the fee list, the highlighted items are changing.
Okay.
The item not, not, it's not changing.
Just Madam Chair, you may want to just discuss, Roman, the twilight fees. You are kind of changing a little bit how you operate to kind of encourage more activity?
Yeah, sure, I mean, that is one of the reasons we're tweaking the twilight fees a little bit is to encourage more play. That's a time of day and that's a rate that's the most affordable, so it's the best opportunity to get new golfers in, families with young children in, so we're really trying to maximize the amount of play we can get at twilight. So that when we do get new golfers, we encourage them to come out and play at twilight when it's more affordable and there's more availability.
So that fee and the other fee between September 3rd and September 25th, the $60, that increases from 44, right?
From 44, we just think that's a very high demand time and it's an opportunity to make some revenue.
Right, no, that's great, Michael?
Ready to make a motion?
Yeah.
I move that we approve the 2019 Cranberry Valley Rates and Fees as recommended.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in fa, oh.
Okay, so there's the fees that are highlighted in yellow that are changing.
That's correct.
Also, the junior twilight fee, is that new?
The junior twilight fee that I highlighted, it's just the, we're going to allow juniors to play in the morning, morning back nine and it's twilight, that's a new availability to juniors.
Okay, so that's a new, in essence, a new fee?
That's it, okay, yes.
Yeah, okay. And, and the weekday greens fee from September 3rd to the 26th, it's an existing fee, you're just changing the calendar around it?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I hope you're taking advantage of this weather.
It's going to get cold, it's a busy day today.
We don't want to jinx it though.
Onto new business, which the request by Verizon slash EverSource to relocate one jointly owned pole on Shore Road in Harwich, no hearing required as is an alteration of an existing pole. Michael?
I move that we approve the request by Verizon and EverSource to relocate one jointly owned pole on Shore Road in Harwich.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. The Hot Stove Restaurant Extension Agreement, so we previously, well, did you want to give an overview or?
Maybe just for folks at home that may have an interest in this. I know that the Hot Stove has been a very successful contractor up there at the golf course and they had, under the terms of the original lease, was a, in total, allowed for five years with a three-year base and a two-year extension. One of the things that I think the town is really striving for relevant to this operation is to have it be a turnkey. I think when we went out to bid three years ago to have it, when Hot Stove came in and was successful in winning the bid, there was a considerable amount of work that had to be done to kind of bring that standard, bring it up to a restaurant standard, if you would. So we wanted to take some of that into account. So in terms of it, it has been a little bit of a challenging site because it is a remote site, not necessarily an attraction for a restaurant, so really if you're there to play golf. So we have kind of put elements in here to try to promote cooperation and advertising to work on behalf of both the town and the vendor. So at the end of the five-year lease in total, we would have the ability to either go up to bid again, obviously, and then have Hot Stove put in for it and have a successful location. So just some of the elements that were in this agreement, so it's a two-year extension. We did decrease the rent in year one, 19, to $10,000 and then year two, 2020, to $12,000. And that ends on December 31st. That actually does give us a little bit more time to go up to bid if need be in the end of that period. And that we have made a decision fairly early on in the lease that the town does contribute a certain amount of money to fund improvements to the facility. Again, more recognition that it was a substandard restaurant facility at the time and we're trying to bring it up to a higher standard. And we did have in here a recognition that, I think it was about $86,000 worth of improvements to the site, taking into depreciation and so forth. We did acknowledge and have agreed to pay up to $40,000 for those improvements and equipment to stay on the site. So at the end of the two years, it will be a fully functioning and equipped restaurant when we go back out. And then as an effort to try to promote additional usage, we have 2,500 in gift cards as part of golf tournaments will be given that will be affiliated with Hot Stove, so it would hopefully bring in additional customers as a result of winning prizes and things of that nature to try to improve the experience. We have had created, plan on creating dedicated restaurant parking spaces and we're going to try a valet parking, if you would, for people to be able to go to their car, park, and then if you go into the restaurant, you can get picked up and dropped off. So we're trying a few things. A lot of these innovations came from Roman and his team to try to promote that facility and improve it. And their revenues and their people coming in have gone up for the first three years, so it certainly is a successful venture and one that I think that's in the best interest of the town to continue. And I appreciate the board, I think voted unanimously to approve the two-year extension.
Thank you, Chris. So we will move along to confirmation of Saturday, March 2nd, 2019, as the date to meet jointly with the Finance Committee for Budget Review Meetings.
This was just a, we have, I think I brought this up a couple of meetings ago, just a confirmation. Do you want to have the Saturday session? And the confirmation was yes, let's do the Saturday session. And one thing I would like to just ask on this, the Capital Outlay had expressed an interest in attending as well. So if we could add them to the posting if they had an interest in being there. That was something at their meeting that they had brought up. More so just for the general public that the town does go through a comprehensive review of the budget and doing it as a joint hearing with the Finance Committee, it tends to be a practical way of accomplishing that. And it is a televised session, so if people want to watch at home, they have the ability to do so. But just, I know March 2nd is a long way away, but trying to organize, you know, seven people on the Finance Committee, five people on the Selectmen and seven pe, nine, nine, five and then seven on, I was thinking seven on Capital Outlay. You know, it just takes a little bit of coordination, so we wanted to give people as much lead time as possible.
Right, so all board members are available on March 2nd, right?
26th.
Yes.
March?
2nd.
March 2nd.
And you go?
Yeah, I guess.
I guess I will be.
Well, you better be. Okay, and I think that Don indicated previously that he was, Bob.
Yes, Dana from the Finance Committee, we sent it out to all our members, we've received no objections, so.
Great.
We actually have a meeting a week from Thursday, we'll actually vote it, but we had no problems.
Perfect, thank you, Dana. Okay, you don't need us to take any official action.
No, just an acknowledgement of the deal.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Contracts, we have contract agreement between the town and the Community Development Partnership Housing Consultant. This is a vote to approve. So we all have the packet of the community development.
Maybe I'll do a little bit of overview and then I'll invite our contractor to come up.
Great.
As part of the town CPC development and application, we had put in a request for money to have as a startup for the Affordable Housing Trust, which we've had our first meeting and we're off and running. One of the acknowledgements in that was that there's a lot to it in terms of taking on the issue of affordable housing in, on the Cape. And in that, we had $30,000 was built into the request to establish a partnership with a outside vendor to assist us in this endeavor. So we did do an RFP, I think Evan did a nice job working with the other communities to just have a uniform RFP anyway to send out in the hopes that we could attract the same vendor and then hopefully lead to a more decent partnership with other towns. But we did do an RFP and Community Development Partnership was the vendor that had submitted. I just want to kind of publicly, I did volunteer to go on to the trust and actually I was made Chairman of the Trust, which I think is very thoughtful of people and I appreciate that. But I would never have ventured to do it if it wasn't for the Housing Institute. And going through that course for two years has kind of empowered me to understand the issue a lot better. And, you know, CDP and the efforts of Andrea and Jay were really behind that. So I think that this is a great opportunity. It's $30,000 per year for up to 10 hours per week to have us get started. Because we're starting midway through, we'll go up to 20 hours to kind of help us with the startup elements. And just, I did have a conversation with Selectmen Howell today and he had expressed some concern. I told him I would kind of publicly just acknowledge I've had this conversation with Jay already. CDP does do some of the work that we would be engaged in as a housing trust in that there could be potential opportunity where the conflicts could emerge, ethics, conflict of interests. So we're aware of that and as we go forward, we'll make sure that any projects that we work on, we do with that being a thoughtful part of any of the projects. I think the focal point of what CDP offers to us, this is probably in their wheelhouse, is probably being the most effective arrangement for the town at this time. No one knows what time we'll have in the future, but at this time, I think it would be an opportunity for a, really a great partnership to help us hit the ground running.
Thank you, Chris.
Just really quickly, Evan Malillo, credit where credit is due, the RFP was written by myself but in partnership with Town Planner, Charlene Greenhouch, so I just wanted to give her some credit too.
Thank you, Evan.
Christopher, thank you, I'm Jake Coburn, the Chief Executive Officer of the Community Development Partnership and my colleague Andrea Aldana, who directs our Housing Advocacy program and is really the mastermind behind making the Housing Institute so successful. And I really want to commend leadership in the town of Harwich for the, both the Town Administrator and the Assistant Town Administrator and the Town Planner and several other staff and volunteer board and committee members being part of that. The CDP is certainly no stranger to the town, although our offices are based in Eastham. We have 28 units of affordable rental housing here in the town of Harwich, including Thankful Chases Pathways, which is probably the development that we're most proud of. We have for many years run a Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program with Community Development Block Grant Funds in the town. And so our efforts to support town boards and staff and residents with the affordable housing issue is just the latest step in the work that we have done here and we really look forward to helping the town be successful in addressing the affordable housing challenges. And I'd be happy to ask any questions of members of the board. And I would just echo the sentiments of the Town Administrator in terms of potential conflicts of interest. I think some of you know, I've in the past served as a member of the Select Board in the town of Turo, where we also run, as the CDP, their Community Development Block Grant. And so I'm very well-versed with the state ethics laws and potentials of conflict of interest. And I can assure you, we would be above board and make sure that we address any of those issues that might come up in the future.
Thank you, thank you. Any members of the board have any questions?
I have a question and a comment, Michael.
Michael?
I guess a question, could you give me an example of a conflict interest that may arise from this?
Sure, so say if we were involved working with the town in the preparation and the identification of an appropriate site for affordable housing and were to support the work of the town in doing a feasibility of that site and helping to craft an RFP for a developer, it would be a complete conflict of interest for us to then bid to be that developer. And so that is something that we, that we, you know, obviously we would not do. We either, you know... We either, you know, pick one side or the other, but we can't, you can't, under the ethics law, you know, write the RFP and then be one of the respondents to it.
What other towns, I mean, I'm looking at Turo, but what other towns have you done this like model? Or is this a brand-new model for you guys?
Certainly, we are no strangers to working on affordable housing, both in creating housing, managing housing that's owned by towns and other nonprofits in the Lower Cape Region, working with people who come into our offices and helping them fill out applications and get on waiting lists for affordable housing. In terms of actually kind of bringing all of these services now specifically to a town and supporting a town board, this is a new effort. But I think it brings together, you know, over two decades of experience that we've had on the Lower Cape working on the affordable housing issue.
If I may?
Yes.
Only respondent to the RFP?
Yes.
And the initial thought of us sharing a housing coordinator with other towns? Everybody else dropped out, not interested? I don't know if it's necessarily an answer. Yes, no one participated in a joint venture with us. Two other towns did use our RFP as a model going forward, and I think that what we were trying to do, you know, I'm trying to produce results for the community preservation folks, so we wanted to make sure that we went forward. But I think the idea is that if the other towns do secure the similar services, that then we could do a more formal partnership with those other towns going forward. But just timing-wise, we went out on our own. But we definitely have done it in concert and in communication with the other towns.
If I could just elaborate on that for you, Mr. McCaskill. One of the things that we are able to do, we will bid on the town of Chatham's RFP, and I hope that we'll be successful there. We also, this year, our State Representative Sarah Peak secured a rather significant earmark to support both the Housing Institute, the advocates training, as well as these services to towns. And so while the town is contracting for a certain number of hours, and we hope that the town of Chatham will be able to do so the same, because we have these additional resources, though, we're going to be able to hire a full-time, highly skilled person. Andrea and I and some of my existing colleagues over the next month to two months will be getting the ball rolling and providing the services. But we are also working to bring in a full-time staff person who's going to be available to work with, hopefully, all four of the Lower Cape towns to, as you kind of said, do a shared housing consultant. But that also, too, by moving this function into a nonprofit rather than the town, say, sharing a staff position with another town, you're not going to be taking on the potential retirement liability in the future. And that also, we have a bit more flexibility if there perhaps are specific tasks or areas of expertise that might not be available in that shared consultant. We're in a position to pretty easily bring in those kinds of services from Boston or from other sources. So I think this kind of model is actually similar to something that's happening in the western suburbs very successfully with several towns. I think at the end of the day, that we're going to be able to provide the most flexibility and the most cost-effective way to the town.
Thank you for that explanation. Chris, the, our Housing Committee, our Housing Trust, have you met on this? Did you guys review this? Has there been any vote from the Housing Trust? And why are we? We have not yet. We're, we have a meeting set up for the twentieth. And is this, is this time-sensitive, that it needs to be voted on by the board before the trust meets on it? I guess yes, in a way. And what do I mean by that? I have on December thirteenth, next, not this Thursday, but next Thursday, going to the CPC. And they have expressed at least, you know, through individual comments, that they're concerned that we haven't made enough progress in a timely fashion. So having this on board and having this contract signed, I was hoping to have CDP join me at the table at December thirteenth. We are having some folks too, from, hopefully, some folk come over from Brewster to kind of explain how, you know, this is a startup venture, and rushing it isn't necessarily the best idea. But we're trying to look and see how Brewster took and how they've made some progress. They've made some really good progress, I think, in terms of this. So having them on board and secured prior to that meeting with the Community Preservation Committee, I think would be advantageous for us. Okay, I guess the last question is ten hours a week, and that we're going to bump it up to twenty to hit the thirty thousand because we're only, because we're halfway through the year. I mean, is there twenty hours worth a week worth of work to do? And I apologize for all these questions, but this is the first time we've really discussed this. And I don't see, for myself, anyway, I don't have enough information, or I don't feel like it's been thought out enough for me to vote on it. And I hear what you're saying about CPC and I know how they operate. However, I think we're pretty close. But I guess the question is, ten hours a week, twenty hours a week? How are we going to ramp that up to twenty hours a week?
So certainly, we plan, and we're going to be, going to be meeting with the Town Administrator to work out some of the exact details of this. But our plan is to maintain a staff presence for a good part of one day a week here in Town Hall, to be able to assist residents, as well as be providing support, as requested, to the various town committees, the Housing Authority, the Housing Trust, and the Affordable Housing Committee on their work. It's certainly been the experience in the town of Brewster, who's now had a similar position in existence now for over two years, that their, the demand for their services has been growing significantly. If there is not work here, we're not, and this is the, you know, some of the flexibility that we've been provided by the funds that we've received through an earmark from State Representative Peak, we're not going to sit here and tick the clock away and twiddle our thumbs if there isn't work to do, and that we'll only be, you know, billing town for the actual hours that we're providing services.
And just to kind of elaborate a little bit, we have on the December twentieth meeting, we have about, probably between, I think it's between five and seven different properties that we're looking at. And one of the things that we really need a lot of assistance on is we're looking at various town properties that are under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen, you know, what makes sense to kind of move forward. I know one of the other communities, I think it was Orleans, had engaged the Mass Housing Partnership, the state agency, to kind of look at some of these properties. And I think before we go too far down the road, having a review done on these parcels, and we're trying to meet the deadline really for the town meeting warrant of having those vetted, I have to have an application to real estate and open space by our own policies and procedures of these parcels. So I think that there's plenty of kind of work to do to kind of get us started on it.
Larry, do you have any questions?
I think it's a good, cost-effective way to get started. I think Michael's question about, we aren't locked into ten or twenty hours per week is going to be dependent on the workload, is important. The contract is a one-year contract?
It's a two-year contract.
Two-year.
Yeah, just in terms of that, as a byproduct of CPC funding is at one year at a time.
Right.
So because we have an application, we need town meeting to actually approve the second year. So it's a one, it's a two-year contract, really a one year with an option for a second year. So we did bid it out because we'd like to have the services be, have some continuity to it. But officially, it will be one year. Any contract in government is being part of funding.
But we could move away from it after one year, as you're saying.
We could, yeah.
We'd only do the extension.
We could.
Ed, do you have any questions?
Well, not so much a question, but a comment. The potential one downside I see is the fact that if you help us develop a property to go out to bid with, having successfully done some development work in the town, not having you as one of those potential bidders is somewhat of a downside. But hopefully, helping us be well-prepared to go out to bid will offset that.
I think, you know, unfortunately, the complexity and cost of development has increased greatly since we did Thankful Chases Pathways eight years ago. And, you know, as an organization, while we are strong and have a strong balance sheet, you know, we currently don't have a real estate developer on staff. And so really having that capacity to, for us to respond to a development opportunity is just not something we're in a position to do right now, and I don't see us being in that kind of position, at least in the short term. But I think, you know, there were, certainly are opportunities, and I think what we can do is work with the town to help you choose a developer who's going to kind of take the care and be responsive to community needs and be a real partner in creating affordable housing for the town.
So, go ahead.
Elijah's going to, we have our fire police working right now. Process-wise, and Chris, maybe this is towards you, you, they'll help you assess different possibilities, and you'll take that to the Housing Trust, and then you'll, and that comes to us after.
Yeah, no, by the, by the structure, the Housing Trust, as long as we operate within the confines of the state laws, we can do what is allowed under the Affordable Housing Trust element, so we can do affordable housing. The time sensitivity is that if we're going to pursue town-owned parcels that need to be re-designated from general municipal use or Selectman's jurisdiction, to have those transferred over to the trust, so that way the trust can actively market those properties for affordable housing projects, that by our own process, we're an entity like anyone else, we need to follow the town's process. So we need to file with the Real Estate and Open Space, we need to identify those parcels, see what's viable or not, and then have those ready to go for town meeting. So it's that work that the trust needs to have this assistance in, to have those parcels identified.
You'd be putting together reports and so on, too.
Oh, absolutely.
Get that information.
So in doing that kind of a feasibility study, those hours would be assisting us in taking those parcels, doing a feasibility study, looking at which parcels are the best ones to put forward to Real Estate and Open Space. In terms of any kind of legal issue that comes up, where do we go with that?
We would utilize KP law to do that. That's what other towns have done. I think the other thing that's been kind of an interesting lesson to see how Brewster has done it, by having a presence, by having a person in Brewster, what that has done is it's brought a lot of people into Town Hall to talk to her and to start to explore some of the other options that are out there. If a person wants to convert their home, that right now they rent it out, and they want to have it be rented as affordable, that's a channel that we can now send. So I think we'll start to vet through a lot more options that are available in the community that by having a presence will, now people will feel more confident in coming forward, you know, quite honestly. So I think having that presence is, you know, has an added value of giving us more opportunities to look at other options.
And logistically, where will that person be, under community development, or are they going to have a?
We probably will have a small meeting room in the library.
Okay.
Make that available.
Okay. Any other questions? Sorry, Ed?
Just to be clear, locating the site is one issue in developing affordable housing. And the CDP would presumably help with going through that process, and then it goes to town meeting to be transferred to the Housing Trust. After it's transferred to the Housing Trust, then the next step is developing, going out to bid, locating finance, you know, all of those issues.
Absolutely.
As I understand it, because the trust is, in some ways, has a separate authority, it can, it can go through that, that whole process and go out to bid without returning to town meeting?
That's correct. Just on.
Although I would just say that theoretically, that is the case.
Yeah.
But for any affordable housing project that is going to be receiving funds for the state, and I don't think it's possible to build one without getting some form of subsidy from the state, the state is going to want to see that the town is also contributing funds to that. And while I know you would certainly have funds available, you know, in your trust, there's probably the likelihood that you're going to want to go for some CPC funds as well. And so there, you know, is a possibility for, and that is what the state is looking for, is for a demonstration that the town is supportive, before they put state resources in this, that the town is supportive of the project.
And just to be clear, you know, as procurement officer, all the requirements of procurement in the public process still need to be adhered to. So we're just, the Housing Trust is really a division of the town of Harwich, but all those advertising requirements and public notice, all those have to be complied with relevant to any of those projects.
But whereas getting additional funds dedicated to a project, there are certain hurdles in the process that if it was the Selectman doing it, we'd have to go to town meeting at every one of the hurdles that you may be able to.
To do it more efficiently.
To do within the confines of the trust.
And be able to thus move in a much more timely fashion than waiting for every mag.
Yes. Michael? So, thank you. You're welcome. No question that your company is certainly capable of doing this, and probably, definitely as of right now, the best to do this. I am a little, a little concerned with the fact that the Housing Trust that we spoke to CPC about and that we told the public was going to be an independent organization hasn't weighed in on this. I know that a separate article was for the thirty thousand for the housing coordinator, but it was to work for the trust. So I really believe that the trust should be weighing in on this, not the Board of Selectmen necessarily. Second, as I read through the contract, scope of work, it's just written in there, housing coordinator. See Attachment A. Article three, compensation, thirty thousand dollars, no detail. Skip down to Article, Attachment A. Attachment A. Bear with me. FY nineteen, write out in both words and numbers, thirty thousand dollars. There's no, nothing in that contract talking about ten hours, twenty hours. To your comment about meeting with the Town Administrator, work out the details, it would seem to me before this board voted on it, the details probably should be worked out. And I would still, again, suggest that the Housing Trust also be involved in this. It's why we made it, it's why the town voted for it. But this contract is a very basic contract, it doesn't say anything to me, and it is written a two-year contract we're voting on. Certainly, we can get out of it if there's a provision in here to get out of it, but I haven't read that far yet. And that's my final, final comments.
So we responded to a request for proposal with a pretty detailed set of scope of services that, that's, you know, from our experience, is pretty clear about exactly what the services are, that we would, we would be providing the town, be providing the town. So I haven't seen the draft contract that, that has come before you. And while, you know, I appreciate, you know, the desire certainly to not rush something through and to carefully consider this, I also hope to, you'll appreciate that we also need to start moving forward on making a hire, so that we can get a full-time staff person dedicated to this effort as soon as possible. And certainly, you know, delaying that process is going to delay our ability to do that. But again, I, you know, I defer to the wisdom of, of course, the board. You're the ones that make these decisions, but I just, I did want to just communicate that we certainly are eager to get started and get moving forward.
Thank you.
Evan's got something.
Oh, Evan?
Yeah. Good to see you guys. So Attachment A that Michael was referring to, I just wanted to clarify that a little bit, if I could. So it says, "The undersigned hereby submits a sealed proposal for the housing consultant. The proposer hereby pledges to provide the scope of services as outlined in the RFP." And it's the RFP that they are referring to. And so if you go to that, and it's in the summary that we provided along with the procurement checklist. And so in the summary and in the Section Three scope of work here, it talks about the office hours, it talks about the, "To provide support to town housing-related committees as directed by town administration," has a list of things under that, "monitor existing units on town subsidized housing inventory," has a list of things there as well, "and develop a plan for future collaboration in housing production and preservation among the towns of Brewster, Chatham, Harwich, and Orleans, and identify and procure consultants to complete any additional tasks." And it's, it's got a line there. So there is a list of scope of work that that was referring to. So it's a reference to a reference to a reference, but it is in there.
In the contract, though, Evan, is that what you're saying? This is referenced?
Yeah, this is the Attachment A that it's referencing.
The RFP is.
Right, and the RFP, right.
So the, the attachment. So the, the Attachment A references the RFP. Sorry that it's a reference to a reference.
I think I already passed it.
No.
Yeah.
Keep going.
Right there.
My computer died, so we'll, we'll look somewhere else for expertise here. Says I'm not plugged in.
Right now.
Yeah, so we've got the money part. Where is it here?
Just give me the packet.
Well, the extra note, right.
I don't have the contract directly in front of me.
Attachment A is just the first two pages.
It's just the overall, what, what, what it's saying is thirty thousand in FY nineteen, thirty thousand in FY twenty, total of sixty thousand. But it also says in here that it's a one-year contract, to Chris's earlier point. It's a one-year contract, but can be renewed unless the town had a reason not to renew it for the second year. And it's in here, because I read it, and I just got to find it.
It's not in Attachment A though, right? Am I crazy?
I don't think so. I, I read it in the contract, it's in.
Is it in Attachment A? In the contract itself, it has a reference to the entire agreement, which the entire agreement includes all documents. All I'm asking is where.
Yeah, it's in here, hold on, I found it earlier.
Page five is of the.
Apologies, I don't have the contract in.
And then the RFP is, it was in the packet.
No, it is in the packet, I read it, I'm just trying to find the page.
To your point though. I see everything in the packet someplace, it's not in the contract, unless I'm crazy. But we'll leave it at that, my comments are my comments, and I'm, and I'm done, I've said my piece. And we'll put it on for the agenda on the, the meeting of December twentieth too. I think it's a good point that we have a new agency, and the agency should also vote in favor of it.
And we can bring it back, I mean, you'll still have time, correct? I mean, if we don't vote on it tonight, and you get the clarifications, right? We can review next.
Under the charter, because it's now past December first, any contract that is less than twenty-five thousand, I could have, I could have done it if it was over fifty thousand. I didn't want to attempt to do something under the.
Right.
Unhanded or untoward. So because it's over the twenty-five thousand, by selectman's regulation, I, I don't have the authority just to award this on my own.
But also, the other deadline here is Real Estate and Open Space, correct?
Yeah, I mean, getting.
And identifying the parcel and getting that.
Getting that work started.
Right. And when is your meeting with them?
I think it's December, well, December twentieth is the next meeting with the trust.
Trust, yeah. December twentieth, what is that, is that a?
Do we have a meeting after that?
Thursday, I believe.
I don't think we do have a meeting after that, right?
I don't think you do.
Yeah.
So we, so we have to move tonight, or is, or is?
Or it's going to sit.
It's going to sit until next year.
Yeah. Okay.
I would just like to have them secure.
I could move ahead with, you know, Michael, he raised good questions, but I, I would take a chance on it, but I'm a little less, like, comfortable not going through the Housing Trust, but I guess we are where we are at the moment.
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I agree that, I would like to have the trust review it, at the same time, it's the only bidder. And I think that the, I can't speak for the trust, but.
Well, this, this, this is where we are on this. I move that we approve the contract agreement between the town and the Community Development Partnership for the housing consultant.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, we'll move forward with that.
Opposed.
I'm sorry, opposed, excuse me.
For good reason, Michael.
Yeah, it, it's a valid concern, I just hate to.
Definitely have it on the agenda, my apologies for not, we just didn't have a meeting in time to coordinate the, the bid award too.
Right. But, I mean, if, if for any reason the trust had a problem with it, we would want to hear that.
Immediately, yeah. I'll put it on the agenda.
Old business, crosswalk policy, second reading, possible vote.
If anyone wants to say anything, otherwise I'll make a motion that.
Oh.
Public, public comment.
Yeah. Is anyone from the public want to make any comment? Jerry, did you want to say anything, or?
Um, I did another rundown.
Come to, yeah, thank you.
Good morning, good evening, Jerry Veltus, Chair of the Traffic Safety Committee. I did another Google search, and what I stated originally was forty crosswalks has ballooned to a hundred and twenty. There's eighteen on the state, and some of those, then we have another eleven, I believe, that are bike trails that state may or may not. And then the town owns roughly eighty, and there's something like seven that are on bike trails. And then private is twenty-four. The reason I mention private is for ADA compliance, that if somebody's in a parking lot and they get to their destination, you know, ADA might be forced to act on it.
Okay.
That's about it.
Right, thank you, Jerry. Michael?
Jerry, has anything changed from your first reading to your second reading?
No.
No changes since the last time you were here?
No, same draft proposal. Larry had a concern about the flow of the document, and speaking to Link, his, when he puts it on the website, he'll make item D, I believe it is, part of the opening page. And then I spoke with Jamie, she's willing to put it on town website, so we may link the town website to Link's website, I don't know how it's going to work, but we'll make it available and easier to read. Most of the document, the public doesn't really need to know the details of the MUTCD or the AD, ADA. But if they want to get into it, then we'll gladly work with anybody.
Michael?
So, second readings happened, we can take a vote on this?
Yeah.
I moved that we approve the crosswalk policy as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, unanimous.
Thank you, Jerry.
Propose revisions to sewer regulations.
So, Madam Chair, at the last meeting, I had it on the agenda, but we didn't have the backup material. So we do have the backup material, made it into the agenda. The, the two elements on this was that on the selectmen, the Board of Selectmen acting as the, the sewer authority in the community promulgated regulations regarding the, the hookup of sewer and the operation of the sewer system. Currently, in the regulations that have been already adopted, there is a hookup requirement of within one year. So this amendment, as you can see, would have moved to two years, seven hundred and thirty days. And then Article three on the building the sewer in connection, section two, the attorney has added in, "The plan and specifications may be prepared by either a Massachusetts Registered Engineer or a Massachusetts Registered Sanitarian, as provided in accordance with CMR, provided that the Registered Sanitarian shall not design a sewer connection that will discharge more than two thousand gallons per day." That's the same standard that exists under Title V. The idea behind this isn't necessarily to have the board vote this this evening to make those changes, but just to have the board acknowledge that we will send a note over to the Town of Chatham, because we're supposed to do in accordance with the IMA, things in, in coordination with Chatham to make sure that we're not out of sync, to, to just advise them officially that this is something that the board is, is making, contemplating a change, for these two changes, and do they have any concerns? Once we get feedback from them, if there's no concerns, then we would put it in for the selectmen to change their sewer regulations.
Thank you, Chris. Are there any questions or comments from the board?
No.
Ed? I just have one question. The way it's written, where it says, "The plans and specs may be prepared by either a Massachusetts Registered Engineer or a Massachusetts Registered Sanitarian, as provided four and three, ten, CMR, fifteen, twenty-one, provided that a Registered Sanitarian shall not design a sewer connection that will discharge more than two thousand gallons per day." So, I mean, it makes it sound like, and I know it's not intended to, because a Registered Engineer can't design it for more than two thousand gallons a day either, but it makes it sound like maybe the engineer could and the sanitarian can't.
No, that's, that's my understanding, they, a, a PE could design a system. What I think this gets to is really, an average home doesn't use that type of volume.
So, yeah, all right, so it's based on the.
It's more like at the cultural center.
Commercial.
Seventy-seven thousand square feet. You, you wouldn't want to have a Registered Sanitarian do that piece.
So that's the level of design.
Yeah, it's just a level, it basically is commercial level, if you would.
Okay, thank you. No, I have no other questions, comments, so, anyone? We're not going to vote it.
It just, as long as there's an acknowledgement, I'll send it over officially, that the board is contemplating this change, and just if there's any input from the Chatham Board of Selectmen. And the Board of Selectmen Act is their sewer commissioner, so there's reason for that.
Okay. Ed?
My only comment is, in designing the connection, it is, it's basically on the interior of a house, it's something that plumbing contractors design, but you go outside and, you know.
You can't.
It's, 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 it's still simply just piping and a slope. And it seems like any competent building, plumbing contractor could handle that also.
Probably can't get into that.
But.
Okay. So, Cultural Center, ball fields, Chris, if you'll give an overview, we, we've discussed this a few times.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this has been a little bit in the making, I think it was actually a discussion this past summer or even earlier, about having a situation in which the Montomoy Regional Agreement just calls for the, in this, in that case, the middle school to be turned over to the, to the Town of Harwich. What the agreement didn't really contemplate was, okay, the building's been turned over, but what about the grounds, and how are the grounds to be utilized? So, actually, Madam Chair, you, you were a party to a, a meeting that we had with the superintendent, I believe the, the principal at the elementary school was also in attendance. And we had a discussion about, okay, how do we create this designation? So I will kind of go through a little bit. At that meeting, they, the result of it was to have me take a stab at seeing if we could come up with a intermunicipal agreement between the selectmen in Harwich and the Montomoy folks. This is very much just a draft, just to kind of highlight that. One of the things that I was attempting to do in this, and actually based upon comments from our former, now retired surveyor, he said that the term of ard is what's called an exclusive use line. And the reason for the exclusive use line is that you don't want to create a new boundary line, because it's all Town of Harwich property. So how do you designate off? So he did draw a line, literally a line, that allows for one side of the line, if you would, would continue to be under Montomoy Regional School District participation and oversight and control. And then the other side of the line would be for the Town of Harwich. Really, just for folks at home that may not have the map in front of them. Behind the school, there's basically Little League-type ball fields on one side, and then there's school playground equipment and school, I want to say, four-square type of area that kids can use. So what I tried to take a stab, and again, this has just been presented to the superintendent, I know he's going to bring it back to the school committee for their input, so very much a draft in, in the works, and I was looking for board input relevant to this. But the elements of it, the commitment, the line would be used to designate, is designated use only and not intended to be a new property boundary, that's just for ownership purposes. And then we do have that as attached in Exhibit A, the line itself is drawn. Montomoy agrees to maintain and improve as necessary the Harwich Elementary School side of the grounds, consistent with the regional agreement through its superintendent. Harwich agrees to maintain and improve as necessary the Cultural Center, the former middle school side of the grounds, consistent with other property under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen as administered by the town administrator. In our charter, it does have all the assets fall under the administrator to, to be responsible for, that's why I mirrored that language. Item D here, nothing in this agreement shall prohibit Montomoy or Harwich from working together to allow each other use of the property. So if the elementary school athletic programs wanted to make use of the fields, not just have kids on the, the paved surfaces, that we would allow for that, and/or improvements to the grounds or structures, castle in the clouds, playground areas and ball fields, if by mutual consent both parties or their respective designees agree. What I was trying to get at, I think with this, is if they have playground-type activities and they want to have use of the ball fields during school hours, we probably don't need a selectman's vote, or we don't need the administrators or the superintendent to have to make those decisions. We would put, as a for instance, perhaps Eric Beebe from the recreation, just be in coordination with the, the elementary school principal, so they can work out those level of details, that's what that item allows for. And then each entity understands that said funding elements of this agreement are subject to appropriation by town meeting. And then the idea behind this is that it would be a, a five-year agreement. I, I was able to, to keep it to just over one page, so I was trying to keep it fairly, fairly simple in that, but if I've gone too simple, you know, I'm more than happy to, to take comments.
Any questions, Michael?
That's the only comment I have, Chris, is the, that red line that's drawn on this plan here?
Yes.
That looks like it goes to the end, far end of one of the portables in the middle of the old middle school, and then shoots across, straight across?
Actually, where that line goes, and that's a, basically, yes, but it goes from the, the treatment facility, goes up to a point in the castle in the clouds playground, and then goes right along the property li- right along the back of the portable classrooms, that's exactly right. At the edge of the portable classroom, it then goes up. So everything to the Harwich Elementary School side would be school use, and then really the ball fields become under the selectman's jurisdiction.
And so the answer to that question is, it doesn't go straight up, it goes by the boundary line, and.
It kind of, it kind of mirrors the existing facilities on the ground. So it, it does to the, to the point, part of the exclusive use line goes from the edge of the portable directly across.
I'm trying to, so this line go, does this, where am I at here?
So here's, here's the wastewater facility.
Does this line go straight up here, or does this line go around like this?
Yeah, no, the property bound ends right there. So it goes, it goes straight across from the edge of the portable.
Straight here.
Straight through, yeah. That's actually another piece of property.
That was, that was my question then, is it, does that make sense to split that field up in the way you've done it?
It doesn't split the field.
No.
Not because it stops right there, it actually doesn't.
All it does is it takes the paved surfaces, it keeps it at the, at the elementary school side, and the fields all become selectmen.
And the conversation was.
Michael told me, I'm fine.
But the conver-. No, but the, just to be clear, the conversation was, from the school's perspective, is that the ball courts are used during recess, et cetera. Not to say that they couldn't have the ball fields, as Chris has indicated, but that there had to be a line demarking what's going on during the day that's truly theirs, which would end at the ball court. And then, of course, they could use the fields, but that would go to Eric, so, just trying to give clarification for exclusivity.
Trying to make it a little bit common sense, so you could be out there and just look at it.
My concern was that it doesn't, didn't get too cute, it was, it made sense.
Try not to be too cute with this.
Can I just ask a question? Because I don't have a copy of that, I'm just curious. Is this line from the beginning of the back of the elem- of the middle, former middle school to the, right at the edge of the back of it?
Michael's going to show you it, right.
Taking all the ball fields, okay. I'm just curious.
I think it is going to be on the school's agenda for their, for their meeting.
So it was on their agenda last, the last meeting.
It wasn't for the last meeting.
But they didn't come to any conclusion.
So, um, would it be appropriate for me to make a comment?
Sure.
So, it looks like maybe.
Hold on though, could you just identify yourself?
Oh, I'm Sharon Stout, I'm a taxpayer, and I'm also a member, but I'm not here representing the school committee, I'm just asking the question. So it looks like from that, that the elementary school would be left with the playground area, but right now, the, at our last school committee meeting, the elementary school principal got up and said, "Every single day, the kids during recess time for two and a half hours use that field, because it's the only area that they have to run and play soccer and all of that, and the gym classes use it weather depending and other type of things." So, I know that, I was on the school committee during, I think it was two thousand thirteen, I'm not a. So, I know that, I was on the school committee during, I think it was 2013, I'm not exactly sure. Might have been 2012. But the Harwich members of the school committee walked that. And we recommended that some amount of maybe five feet or something behind the building, that all of those fields were for use by the children.
So, when we, when this line is drawn up, it's really to run concurrent with having the Cultural Center. And so, during the day when the kids are in school, the conversation was, if I remember correctly, was that, it wasn't that the children wouldn't be able to continue to use those fields. It was that if the Cultural Center, for example, was going to have an event or something like that, that would involve those, that area, that they would know where they could delineate. But overall, the use of the fields, the children will be continuing to use those fields.
So, would it be okay then, I'm just bringing information back to the school committee, if, because right now, the regional agreement says, as you said, that the fields and the building, and the building has been turned over, would be leased to the town for the various buildings and land for a dollar a year. So, would it be okay then to, instead of take that out, to have it say that during the school day and up until 4:00, which wouldn't interfere with the Little League at all, that the kids would have use of it with an exception if the Cultural Center on occasion needs to use it or something like that? But if that was in there, because my concern is that we are all, I call us all short timers. I'm interested in what happens for this space for 50 years for our children, for the town. You know, somebody may get an idea that we will lease that out to somebody at $100 a month.
Right. No, you make a good point, so we can certainly, I think we can tweak it to...
Yeah, I think if the board was okay with that, I could put in some language that during the school, during school hours, that the fields would be eligible for use by the school. And then anything after hours could be the Cultural Center or if the, if the selectmen wanted to enter into a use agreement with Little League or one of these other entities for the fields, that we could do that, that would then not prohibit the school from using it.
Yeah, I think that when we had that discussion, though, we had said exactly that, which was when it came to Little League use, they could coordinate through Eric, through the rec.
Right.
Ed, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I think what Ms. Stout is indicating, it's that the schools would like to have some surety of being able to use the fields for recess and for gym class during the school day. And that surety could be, notwithstanding the ability at any time by mutual agreement, it could be used for some sort of special activity by the Cultural Center or the rec department or the town or, you know.
I think it would be, I could put a clause into that effect.
You could put something like that.
I think that that wording is pretty straightforward.
And would it, sometimes we have a running club or things like that right after school, even though the school program goes, it used to go to 6:00, it might go to 5:00 or it might go to 6:00, I'm not sure. If it could just go to 4:00? Because then we would at least get like an hour or something to use it for our after-school activity. Would that work for you or not?
I, you know, I don't think that we have an issue with the overall use of the fields during the daytime at any point. It's really just in case it was a Little League issue or that we were talking about having a Cultural Center thing, so, Michael?
I think, Chris, no matter what you come up with for a use agreement, it's exactly that, is a use agreement. This, for me, which I brought this up originally, was to determine who owns what because it was left out in the school agreement. They didn't think about it. When we operated a middle school and we operated an elementary school, and I went to both, the elementary school played on the courts and the playground and behind the elementary school. Middle school used middle school fields. There was a clear line. We've got a five-year agreement to use the Cultural Center. And I want to protect the town. And I'm 100% for the kids being able to use the field. I don't want to get into writing that they can use it until 4:00, 4:15 or 4:05 because we're trying to make the Cultural Center work on top of that for the entire town. And we're trying to make it so that we have a line. And again, on a use agreement during the day, I don't anticipate we're going to try and rent the ball fields. But we really need to look at the entire town and look at the use of the Cultural Center and look at what events we can have behind the Cultural Center. We also have the field in front of the Cultural Center. We're not precluding that the kids use that, which they do, or any other land. But I think getting into an agreement where the school committee is saying, or the school is saying that, and again, they haven't voted on it, you have one resident here who has shared her opinion with me outside of this meeting already. So, this hasn't gone to the school committee. I think we need to protect the entire town. And let's just say, five years from now, that they, God forbid, don't want the Cultural Center anymore and they want to go back to a housing proposal or tear the school down. We need a delineation line of what we're actually going to sell and what our asset actually is.
Yeah, I think, though, you're right, in the sense that, you know, we did this to separate the two and to have some sort of clarification. I mean, if, well, through the five-year period, if we need some sort of clarification on the use of it until we get to that point, and then maybe after that, if there's something where it will be abandoned, then we could decide what we were going to do with those fields. But I mean, if it makes it easier for going forward, for at least, I mean, for five years. We're not talking 50 years at this point.
You know, just, I think that the, all the other grounds, as far as the Cultural Center goes, there's no question about any of that. It's only the back place because the kids now do not, I mean, they're at home on their little digital things. They're just not getting out running. There is no other opportunity for them to do that, except that space.
I think, though, overall, what we're trying to do is, to Michael's point, is to delineate what goes where and what truly belongs there because the Cultural Center has been a goal of the board and we are looking at this plan. So, we're just trying to draw in a line. The school was comfortable with the line that we discussed. So, I mean, I think it goes back to having that conversation with the school committee. Have that discussion. If there's any reason for further clarification, we can take it up at that point. Michael?
I just wanted to add to, I mean, as a board, as a board member, that whole property was designed and developed as a school. And nothing else, which is why I was not for housing there. And I think the Cultural Center and the work that they've done is amazing. But the school is still using the whole property. They're still going to use the front field. They use the driveway in the morning and in the afternoon. And I don't think anyone has a problem with it. And we want to see the kids run around on the field. But it's happening. Are you okay with that language, though, of me adding that, that during the school hours? Just in case school hours change. I think it's good to link it to school hours.
Yeah, rather than note times.
Yeah, yeah, I think that...
Yeah, I think it more flexible.
Fifty-year time horizons.
Because then it just makes you not have to go back and change it eventually, either, if something were to change. So, just leave it generic like that and get the input from the school committee, so.
I'll add that, though, if it makes sense.
I'm fine with school hours.
School hours, right, yeah. Okay. So, town administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. I did provide some of the material to the selectmen in terms of the operation of the private gun range in the club. The attorney had provided back some material on that. I think suffice to say, it's a pretty complicated issue. And if we were to weigh in on that, it wasn't as simplistic as I, as I tried to make at the other meeting. But suffice to say that there is quite a bit of complexity. So, my recommendation stays the same of not getting into that regulation business because it probably could be a slippery slope. The second one is the vacancy on the regional school, Montemoy Regional School, that I just wanted to kind of verify, and we did send the material over to Attorney Giorgio. Earlier in the meeting, we had a departure of an elected official. Because of the time, it's early enough prior to the, prior to the election cycle that the two boards probably want to get together. And in terms of this, it's a little bit unique. It wouldn't be the entirety of the Montemoy system. It would only be the Harwich representatives, the remaining Harwich representatives and this Board of Selectmen that would do the recruitment and selection of a person to fill the unexpired term of the person up until, actually, I'll stay corrected, up until the next election. And then that balance of his term would be up on the ballot. So, I think he has a year and a half that was left on the term. So, if somebody were to put in for that, we would have to hold a joint meeting, appoint somebody to go through the May election. And then at that May election, it would be to fulfill the, to fill the one-year term. Just so if anyone is interested, or I know there are some parties that are interested, just to kind of let people know that. So, whatever the timing, the Board of Selectmen wants us to try to schedule with the other representatives of Montemoy, the Harwich representatives of Montemoy, to vet through the candidates and begin that selection process, I'll send something over to the superintendent and get that process started if...
Michael?
How does one become a candidate?
I believe it's the same process for use in some of these others, like on the Housing Authority. We would just advertise that is a vacancy available and then have a meeting. And then during the board meeting, you do your interviews.
So, I mean, shouldn't we do that now? I mean, this is budget time, this is, we need that representative on there as quickly as we can get him on there.
Part of the reason for putting it on is just to kind of advertise to the community that we have a vacancy and if people want to put in, that they can just fill out the traditional form of volunteer form, or this is what we're looking to do.
But does it require a newspaper ad?
Yeah, it does, right? Doesn't it?
I think we've done that as a courtesy, just any kind of recruitment process. I could have staff put in an ad saying that we're looking for and then schedule something probably two weeks out. See if we can coordinate with the Montemoy folks.
So, that'd be the 17th.
Yeah, it's just, if we could do it as quick as the 17th.
Ed, were you going to say something?
Well, yeah, I believe the only provision is that you, you need to give, have a two-week period for people to apply before you can...
So, we couldn't really do that, yeah.
Hold the...
From what, though, Ed? From announcement tonight or from an ad? That's what I'm questioning.
I would assume a general announcement, which would, I think, our action of accepting Mr. Cafrey's resignation tonight makes, qualifies as that announcement.
Yeah, I'll check on the two weeks because just looking at the wording that they excerpted out, they don't have it in this clause, it could be in there. I think generally, we do two weeks for advertising for vacancies. That is a standard that we have used in the past.
Well, so if we can do the two weeks from tonight, then we can get it in. But if we have to wait another, it's going to be the beginning of, well...
Because now you'd be into January.
This is, but this, this section of the regional agreement only talks about the filling process. I think the Board of Selectmen are constrained by the language in the charter about vacancies on any committees, which is where the two weeks comes in.
Gotcha, thank you.
So, it's not technically that it has to be advertised for two weeks?
No, no.
So, we'll try to schedule something for December 17th and use this as an official public notice, if you would, of the vacancy that exists. Just earlier, we had talked about, the library had brought up about hours of operation. And just to let people know, the town hall will be closed on Christmas Eve, which is December 24th. The board had voted that previously. Trying not to end on a bad note. But we did put in for the Mass Works to try to get the funding for the state to help the state do what the state should be doing. Any way of building that sidewalk from Harwich Port to Sacotucket Harbor, we were not successful with that. I think going to that opening and being part of that, it's clearly obvious that we should have a sidewalk in that area for Out of Cape Healthcare. So, I know, I have reached out, I know through Senator Seer as well as Representative Peak and others. We were trying to get a meeting together to find out what was deficient in that application. But again, you know, this is a state roadway that the town is contributing town funds to make it safe for the state to do what the state should have, or the state committed to doing four and a half years ago to make improvements to that stretch and put a sidewalk in. So, I guess we'll see what we can do to try to progress and see if there's other options that are available to us. But it is disappointing news.
As I understand, the governor's office has expressed interest in reaching out to the communities who didn't get selected to having, opening up a conversation quickly about, so, I mean, they're not just saying, "Tough luck, guys, see you next year." They're saying, "This is all, as far as the money goes, but we want, still want to talk to you and see what we can work out."
Well, that's good, yeah.
We're supposed to be high on that list to have that conversation.
We can thank Dottie Smith from Representative Peak's office for parroting out that information for us.
That's great, good news, yeah. That's seem ridiculous.
And that concludes my comments this evening, Madam Chair.
Selectmen's report, Ed?
Nope.
Nothing?
I don't think so.
Michael?
Just quick, I wanted to publicly thank Brax Landing. I didn't do it last week, as I should have. For all the meals they served on Thanksgiving, it's, I heard it was over 1,000. That they did over 1,000 free meals for the public, the people at town of Harwich.
That's awesome.
Yeah, fantastic.
Thank you to Brax for that.
Larry?
Done.
Nothing? Okay. Just want to reiterate a couple different dates that the Cultural Council stakeholder meetings on 12/6, 10 to 11:30, the library, and that is for Harwich Center here. And then, town hall, sorry, town hall, library. 1:30 to 3:00 at the Chamber. And then the Brooks Academy, 175th anniversary, any kind of memento, celebrating that. The Chamber has offered to collect some of those things if the, if Brooks Academy isn't open. And then we also wanted to, I wanted to note that the stroll, I can't... Christmas stroll last Friday night was excellent, well-attended, a lot of hustle and bustle, so, great night for that, and the tree looked fantastic, so, that's it. Can I get a motion? Thank you.